I'd like to call this meeting to order for the county commissioners of the March meeting. And before we start our invocation and pledge, I'd like to inform everyone of why our brother sitting right beside me usually is not here tonight. Commissioner Godwin had to make a little visit last week to the hospital. He got to spend a little time recovering. He was diagnosed with double pneumonia. So he's at home and will, and if I can, if you will, please continue to remember him in your prayers and just think about him. He misses you all, I promise you, and he should be watching. He said he was anyway. So I'll run him through the drill when we get done tonight. All right. Commissioner Poe?
Thank you, sir. I would like to invite Mr. Darryl Price and Ms. Andrea Goodman to come forward, please. Ms. Andrea is the president of our Veterans Council, and Mr. Price is also a member of the Veterans Council. Distinguished veterans from our county, they've given so much for us already, and we're going to ask them to give a little more tonight. I invite Mr. Price, if he would, to lead us in prayer, please.
Our first Lord, Father, we serve first of all in honor of you, Lord. We also ask you to bless this meeting as we come together in matters concerning this county. Lord, we ask you to just be in our hearts and minds, Lord, as we conduct this meeting. We ask you also for blessing for Commissioner Godwin and any others who may be sick, Lord. We ask you to bless us all. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Patrons, attention. Present arms. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order arms.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Before we approve the agenda, we've got to walk on the consent agenda. We're going to ratify the chairman's signature on an application of grant funding for the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation. If selected, the grant funds will be used as an accessible park, and the required match will be funded by a grant previously awarded to the Parks and Recreation from Tronium. No tax dollars will be spent. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Motion so carries. All right. Item one, updates, and let's see, we'll call on our Dewberry, Mr. David Ralph, thanks here.
Hey.
How are you, sir? You going to present us with a program, I think?
I believe so. Gene, go come up here and get everything straight. Do y'all have the handout with you all? Y'all got the screens up there, too? So, yeah, we were asked to kind of give an update for the Ivanhoe Water System and some other water projects in general. So if you have any questions, stop me, let me know. Otherwise, we'll run through it and have question at the end. So the Ivanhoe Water System project, this is going to be more just an overview of the project, just because I know a lot of the board members, I don't think y'all were here when we first started it, and I know there's been a lot of change, so just want to make sure everybody's at the same speed, and then we'll give an update toward the end of this, too. Background information, a lot of people are going to be familiar with this. Ivanhoe, of course, is in a very rural, remote area, Sampson, very southernmost part, almost of the county. And when we first started looking at water here, I think it was brought to the attention of county years and years ago, but the feasibility for just economic standpoint to give water was just not viable at that time. Luckily, in 2022, the American Rescue Plan Act, now a lot of people know it as ARPA Funds, came out, and it was to help areas like this. So we worked with the Public Works Department to come up with a funding application, and at the time, in March 2022, Sampson County Public, the board commissioners actually approved us to submit and prepare a funding application to the Division of Water Infrastructure. And as a result, we received a $13.3 million grant on August 24th, 2022, for design and construction of that. So this project's been going on since 2022. Quick overview, this is to provide potable drinking water to everybody in the Ivanhoe area that are within the project limits, includes water main extensions from the existing Sampson County Water System Booster Pump Station, and then a backup generator for that Booster Pump Station. Next page is pretty small, but this does show kind of an overview of the project as it stands right now. So that gives you all the water mains, the blue, green, purple, those are different size water mains, and it shows at the very topmost part near In Gold is where we're tying into the existing system. So as you can tell, it's a long ways to get down there to Ivanhoe, and this project luckily with funding was able to accomplish that. Now briefly go through the milestones for this project. This project is a typical design, bid, build project, not alternative delivery method. So a lot of it is a very linear progression, and that's also part of the funding itself. And you can see here it kind of starts all the way back in 2022 when we submitted the application. It took three months before we got the grant award. Following that, you had to submit a preliminary engineering report to discuss different alternatives for the project. That was done toward the end of that year. We didn't receive approval right away, so it was a few month process to get approval through DWI. And while that was ongoing, and we were waiting for the approval, survey in the area started, and I think survey was, yeah, it took about eight to 10 months to get all that area surveyed, as you can imagine with 40 some odd miles of water mains. So during that, we did get some of the survey back early, and we were able to start and coincide our design with that, and we did meet the milestone date to submit all permits by December 1st, 2023. And then, as you can see, there's a long back and forth with the multiple permitting agencies to get the final approval of August 2024. After following, just right after we received the approval from all the permits, we went right out to bid to try to catch up on time, and through that, the state requires you to get a minimum of three bids, and if not, you must re-advertise. So the first time we submitted it out for bid, we received two bidders, and then I think I probably came to you all at the board saying that we re-advertise, and then we did that, and we received two bids again, and we were able to open them on the 17th of 2020, I guess, October 17, 2024, and I came in front of you with a resolution tentative award to Herring Rovemberk was the contractor on this. And then following right after that, all the information with the award had to go back to DWI to review the contractor's application, make sure it was in their correct format. So the gold star denotes where we are right now. We received the authority to award on the 12th of February. So following that, we actually, last week, had our pre-construction kickoff meeting with the contractor, and we set some dates for notes to proceeds and some other items listed below. But we're right in that gold star area, and the biggest piece of this is construction must be complete by December 31st, 2026, and like a little bit cut off, but that's where we're at. I guess if you have any other questions or if any of the audience has additional questions as well, there are other resources, and I'll briefly go through those. Construction updates, so I will be coming back, me or Emma will be coming back to give monthly updates, or whenever we're asked to come and give updates for the construction progress. We anticipate the first month or so, we'll be mainly ordering materials, getting materials to the site, selecting laydown yards, those type of items, so you will see some stuff going on, but construction will likely be very limited for the first month. And then other resources to look for, we've done a lot of outreach for this project, just because of the nature of it, and a lot of that can be found on the Sampson County website. Gene has done a wonderful job at keeping everything up to date on that website. It includes the project map that I showed earlier, videos, I think Mark and Matt Galen did some videos, Emma and myself did some videos, and then we've been doing these updates, and they're all listed in there, too. So you should have the most up-to-date information on that website. That's all I have for Ivanhoe. Any questions from anybody at this point? I can't wait till the end, if y'all just want to ask question at the very end. Okay, I'll move forward. Other projects that we have that we know are, of course, we need to consider enough time, is the landfill area water main extension project, and I'll give you a quick update. This includes water main extensions around the county landfill. Survey finally completed, I believe, a few weeks ago, but during that process, we've already been catching up with them on the design to help catch up on the overall project timeline, and the permits, the missions anticipated April 1st, 2025, which is in line with the milestone date set with DWI. So we are looking good there, and just going with a gut check from what we've seen with Ivanhoe. Permit approvals anticipated late August. By the time we go back and forth with DWI and the other agencies for review, it'll probably be a few months. But as soon as permits are received, that's when we will start putting together the bid package and put out the advertisement for that project. The other projects that recently became important, I know it was on the agenda, I think, last month, are the emerging contaminant funding applications. So we've started looking at that. Actually, last week, I asked the DEQ representatives to come to our office in Raleigh to discuss some of these projects and what we could do to help the county out. I know the two most important ones are in the Old Warsaw Road area and the Mintz area as well, Mintz Highway area, and those, again, will be providing potable water to those regions of Sampson County, trying to get people away from the PFAS and PFOA that are in some of the groundwater wells that were tested by the state. And I will make this known, the DEQ, a lot of those tests, we did not do the test, the county did not do the test. The state actually has came out and done a lot of testing around Sampson County, specifically due to the Camores plant and some other issues out that way. But if there's residents and stuff that feel like they need to get their wells tested, DEQ will test those. But through that, that's where they identified these two projects, where the higher levels of concentration of emerging contaminants in these two areas. So we're currently working on that. The funding cycle will start, I think, this week. The lady from DEQ mentioned, applications will be open starting this week, and then they must be submitted April 30th, so you will all see me next month to come in front of you with some resolutions to pass, to actually submit, and then the funding award will be announced for the spring 2025, which is what we're doing toward August, September. That's it. So any thoughts, questions, concerns?
Oh, how many applications will we be submitting?
That's a great question. So I talked to Mark a little bit earlier today. We know we're going to submit at least two. There's a potential. We're trying to figure out the best way to utilize the funds that the state has available, so I'm working with them, potentially a third, but at next month, I'll come in front of you with all the resolutions, and 100% know.
Do you know if we've applied for the USDA planning grant, $30,000?
So in the past, when Mr. Colsey was here, he actually worked for USDA, and a lot of that stuff back 20, 30 years ago, we were able to utilize those funds because of the size of the system and the size of the county. Now, when we're starting to look at these larger projects, those funds don't go very long ways, would be a good word.
They don't go very long ways, but they help with planning, they cut down on the cost.
That's right. They help with planning, but I think a lot of the planning for this gets tied up in this initial funding application. So when we prepare those funding applications, we're doing a lot of planning as part of that.
Commissioner, to answer your question, I talked to Mr. Turlington about that, and we've looked at making a direct application ourselves for that money, because we will accept every grant dollar that we can possibly be given.
Thank you. That's what we need.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Are they going to have countywide water everywhere? They say that PFAS is everywhere in town.
I don't know, not with these two projects, it won't get that far, but I don't know what the future holds.
All right. Anyone else? Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. Before I turn it over to our action item, Mark Turlington, I'm sorry I missed you, but we are glad to have you back, sir. I know you are. Glad to see you back in the audience and back at work. All right, item two, our action item. Mr. Hudson, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This action item is about our budget workshop recap and adoption of some associated resolutions. So by way of background, this past month, the Board of Commissioners held their first budget workshop, which established a set of goals for the board as the county moves into our new 2025-2026 fiscal year. As a result of that workshop, four resolutions are being presented to the Board of Commissioners this evening for your consideration. I'd like to just kind of, first of all, talk about what they are, and then there are portions I would like to read into the record, Mr. Chairman. The first resolution would be adopting goals. The resolution officially adopts the goals, and they were ideas at the time, but after the board met in your workshop and worked together, you wrote out, you modified, you amended, spent over three hours on your goals, and came up with 38 different goals that you have as a county. Obviously, some are quicker to work on than others, some are very long-term, but unless you have a target, unless you know where you're going, it's really easy to get distracted and off track. So these goals are important for county government as a whole. That's the first resolution. It would establish officially these 38 ideas as your goals. The second is a resolution establishing the Sampson Elected Officials Roundtable. That resolution established a regular meeting of the elected officials of Sampson County, whereby officials may increase partnerships and communication to handle the issues and opportunities that face the community. The third is a resolution establishing the Transportation Advisory Committee, and really, I could probably say re-establishing the Transportation Advisory Committee, because you had that at one point in time. I know COVID and a number of things happened, and some things went by the wayside, but this would formalize that again and name specific people and positions to that advisory committee for transportation. It reforms the committee. The group will be charged with increasing all transportation infrastructure for the benefit of the community and its economic development. A fourth is a resolution establishing commissioner liaisons. This resolution designates individual commissioners, so you're designating yourselves as the liaison for certain broad areas, very important areas, areas that you put a lot of funding into and that are meaningful to the community, such as education, business, or agriculture. Commissioners so assigned take the lead in investigating those areas and reporting back to the full Board of Commissioners. Now, it should be noted that individual liaisons exercise no additional authority and cannot bind the board, but rather help research and convey information and build relationships in the community. So basically, commissioners, county government is very broad, and you touch so many different things, so many different departments and outside agencies, and a couple of big ones include Sampson County Public Schools, Clinton City Schools, the Community College, and then very broad areas such as economic development and education, the business community, and agriculture. So this simply is formalizing, in a way, what you're all already doing. You're already out in the community, you're listening to your constituents, you're concerned about these areas, so this makes it a little bit more formal. Before you take any action, Ms. Chairman, I would like to read a portion of these resolutions, and I'm reading these into the record, Madam Clerk. First resolution, resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners establishing strategic goals. Whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners recognize that good government requires clear vision and direction by the elected leaders of Sampson County, and whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners understands its obligation to make responsible fiscal decisions to provide services that enhance the quality of life of all Sampson County residents, and whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners held a budget workshop on Monday, February 10th, and worked together to develop clear goals for Sampson County government as part of the fiscal year 25-26 budget development cycle, and whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners is committed to providing services in the focus areas of growth and infrastructure, public education, safe community, healthy community, relations and connections, economic development, and excellent government. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby adopts the following goals to guide the county through fiscal year 26 and until further amended by the Board of Commissioners, such goals having been organized in the focus areas of excellent government, safe community, public education, growth and infrastructure, healthy community, economic development, and relations and connections. And then commissioners, following that, is a list of all of the goals, including 38 goals, and that would be adopted this third day of March 2025. Without taking the time to read all 38 goals, I would just like to highlight a couple of the main ones that the board also highlighted. Under excellent government, number one, maintain the county government's positive financial position, low tax rate, and credit strength. Under safe community, create a multi-point emergency communications broadcast tower system for communications redundancy. Under public education, negotiate and jointly adopt a funding formula for public K-12 education that creates budget certainty and strengthens relationships between both school systems and the county. Growth and infrastructure, number one, connect areas experiencing PFAS contamination to the county's potable water system. Healthy community, number one, provide sufficient staffing and facilities for veteran services. Economic development, number one, optimize the balance between industrial, commercial, and residential development to maximize the tax base and minimize the tax rate. And relations and connections, number one, create an environment where residents feel respected and engaged in county government decisions. There are obviously a lot of other ones, but all of these will be made available to the public, and in fact, our local newspaper was in the room when the board was considering these and has written stories about this, so our public information officer, upon adoption, will be publishing this as well. Resolution number two, resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners establishing the Sampson Elected Officials Roundtable. A much shorter resolution, members of the board, so I'll read this in its entirety. Whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners recognize that both the challenges and opportunities facing Sampson County on an annual basis are large, and whereas the citizens have elected many representatives other than commissioners from the community to represent their interests for the purposes of creating better opportunities in lives for themselves and their posterity, and whereas history has shown that isolation and lack of communication does not lend itself to the creation of partnerships, the exchange of ideas, the increase of community support, and overall progress, and whereas this Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim their commitment to collectively receive information, discuss the needs of the community, and work with fellow elected local and state officials and agencies to solve problems and capitalize on opportunities for the benefit of all of the county's citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby establish the Sampson County Elected Officials Roundtable, this being the title for at least a quarterly gathering of any elected officials representing the citizens within Sampson County who may choose to attend, such gatherings to be hosted by Sampson County or upon the election of other units of government hosted by those governments. All such gatherings shall be held in accordance with open meeting laws of the state of North Carolina and be open to the media and the public. Be it further resolved that each roundtable be organized in such a manner as to allow such presentations as are necessary for the sharing of timely information, as well as group or small group discussions in which elected officials gathered are allowed to participate, and further that a county commissioner liaison be selected to chair the roundtable meetings during their term of office in accordance and in the manner of other appointments of commissioners to committees. The third resolution, resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners establishing county commissioner liaison positions. Whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners recognize that Sampson County was established as a political subdivision of the state of North Carolina with a mission to provide a wide array of services to each and every citizen of the county, and whereas since its establishment in 1784, the complexity of government and the provision of services to a growing population has become increasingly more complex, and whereas the Board of Commissioners recognize the need to appoint members of its body to enhance cooperation and communication with other units of government and the private sector to better lead the community, and whereas establishing liaison appointments allow the board to ensure participation from all members, bringing each commissioner's wealth of knowledge and experience to build relationships with entities the county must partner with for the effective and efficient provision of services to our citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby create the following liaison assignments for its members for the express purpose of fostering better communication and partnerships throughout the community to better serve the citizens of Sampson County. Such liaison positions having no right or authority to bind the board, make individual decisions, or act alone other than in the collection and dissemination of information as a representation of the full governing body of the county. Liaison appointments being assigned by the board in the same manner as other committee appointments on which commissioners serve, with one commissioner holding no more than two liaison appointments. And then there's a listing of the liaison positions. Sampson County Elected Officials Roundtable, Sampson County Public Schools, Clinton City Schools, Sampson Community College, Sampson County Economic Development Community, and the Sampson County Agricultural Community. Be it further resolved that at least once every other month during the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, liaison commissioners shall offer a report to the public and the board of their progress and important activities, such report to include information that's available to be shared with the public and which violates no private, confidential, or proprietary information. One note on that, Mr. Chairman, and for the members of the public, if, for example, a liaison is serving in an economic development capacity, there are certain things that the state open meetings law allows to be held in confidence, such as trying to recruit an industry specific to come to Sampson County. So you would be able to, and you would be duty-bound to withhold that information until the project comes to fruition. And finally, the last resolution for the board to consider this evening is the resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners establishing a transportation advisory committee. Whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners recognize that the growth of the county tax base will lessen the burden of property taxes on the residents of the county, and whereas one way to responsibly grow the tax base is through the diversification of the economy through the location of new business and industry, and whereas the location of new business and industry will also create new job opportunities for the citizens of Sampson County, and whereas the highway system connecting Sampson County to the rest of North Carolina and the United States could be improved beyond its current state, and business and industry require excellent lines of transportation for the movement of goods and services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby establish the Sampson County Transportation Advisory Committee, or TAC, whose purpose shall be to enhance the roadway network within to and from our county. Be it further resolved that the composition of the TAC shall consist of the following government appointees, and upon their decision to participate, volunteer representatives from invited agencies and entities. Their commission shall be to work with both public, rather, and private sector agencies and individuals to identify and prioritize transportation improvements of all types, including roadway, rail, or air, and advocate for their funding and construction. Members shall have voting rights. Ex-officio members shall have no voting rights, but shall be able to attend all meetings, participate in discussions, and provide insight and information to the TAC. The director of Sampson County Economic Development is tasked with organizing and providing support to the TAC. From county government, county commission, commissioner is a member. Economic development, the director shall be member and staff lead. Planning, county planner shall be a member. Administration, the county manager is an ex-officio member. These following are invited agencies and entities, so these would be invited to be members of the TAC. From all Sampson municipal governments, the mayors as members. From the city of Clinton, the planning director as a member. From the city of Clinton, the city manager as an ex-officio member. From the Chamber of Commerce, director as a member. Clinton 100 Committee, one member to be appointed. Western Sampson Commerce, one member to be appointed. NCDOT, the resident engineer would be an ex-officio member, and NCDOT, the district engineer or representative, would also be invited. Engineer or Representative, would also be invited to be an ex officio member. From the community, from the industrial sector, one representative selected by the Board of Commissioners as a member. From the business sector, one representative selected by the Board of Commissioners as a member. And from the agricultural sector, one representative selected by the Board of Commissioners as a member, to be considered by the Board this evening for adoption. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the Board. These are some pretty strong resolutions, and they are available for the Board's consideration at this time.
You have any discussion from the Board? Any questions, any thoughts?
Just like to thank you for leading us in the workshop. I think it did everybody here a lot of good interpersonal communication and offered us a chance to interact outside of being up here. I think it was important, and I think it allowed the citizens to see that the interaction that we're putting in this way, and I appreciate that.
Well, I hope that everyone here has heard enough to understand that this Board takes our job very seriously. We put things in place that are challenging us, are going to challenge this Board especially. And when we approve this, and I feel like we will, it's going to put us in another light to the citizens of this community. We're here to serve, that's what we were elected and appointed to do, and we're going to. I want you to feel comfortable in reaching out to any of us on any occasion, if anything that you need, we will do our best, I promise you. This is just part of us moving forward to show you how serious we are about serving a county that we love.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, one, to adopt the goals, two, a resolution establishing the Sampson County Elected Officials Roundtable, three, the resolution establishing the Transportation Advisory Committee, and four, a resolution establishing commissioner liaisons. That is my motion at this time.
Second.
And I have a second, have a motion and a second. All those approve, raised hand, motion so carries.
Could I say something?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I too would like to thank our County Manager for leading us in the workshop that we had. We've not had anything like that in Sampson County before, to my knowledge. And I believe it's going to move us forward into the right direction, where everybody's going to be involved. Everybody will know what we know, and that's the way it should be. So I hope you, if you have any questions, like Mr. McLam said, you're free and welcome to ask any of us, and we'll be, if we can't help you, somebody will.
We're not saying we know everything, that's the first thing I want to say, and thank you. We will find out, we'll go through the process of finding out what we need to find out, I promise you.
What number can we call? The phone book don't list you and Mr. Buck and phone book. Everybody's up.
I don't, exactly. All you got to do is call and ask Mrs. Shannon right here for what my number is, and she'll give it to you.
Who?
I'm going to put you on the spot in that.
Zero-eight.
And your name is what?
Shannon Shannon.
Good job, Chairman. I pause, you're doing a fine job. But like, seriously, we want you to, when you're with us and we're together, we want you to feel comfortable to talk to us and address us at any time. We don't want you to feel like we're unapproachable, and we want, we want this to be your body that represents what you need. All right?
We're ready.
We've done the budget recap, so we're going to move on to the Board appointments, and that's my co-chairman. Chairman Pope, you got everything? He's digging it out.
I'm getting it out. We have some technical Board appointments tonight to replace Commissioners and ex officio members from, they include the Manager and the Finance Director. First motion that I would like to make is for the Mid-Carolina Regional Council Board of Directors, wish motion to appoint Commissioner Crumpler as the Board's representative to the Mid-Carolina Regional Council Board of Directors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion so carries.
Motion so carries. Congratulations. All right, the second one is the Sampson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, motion to appoint our Finance Director, Melissa Burton, as a non-voting ex officio member. So move to appoint her.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Motion carries.
Next is for the Sampson County Economic Development Commission, motion, I would make a motion to appoint our County Manager, Mr. Jeffrey Hudson, as a non-voting member. Do I have a second?
Second.
So seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next will be the Clinton Sampson Airport Advisory Board to appoint our Chair, Commissioner McLam, as the Board's representative on the Clinton Sampson Airport Advisory Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you. To replace Commissioner Godwin on the Sampson County Aging Advisory Board, I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Thaddeus Godwin to fill that position. Do I have a second?
Second.
So seconded, all in favor?
Motion carries.
With that conversation with the recently created boards and positions, I think would be prudent to make the motions at the next board meeting to fill those so that we can examine the individuals that are available unless the Chairman wishes to go ahead and make.
I would like to make a suggestion, and I could be wrong if this is out of line, the county lawyer can correct me, but as far as commissioner liaisons, I think it would be appropriate, and I would like to make a motion if I can, that the Chairman be granted the authority to appoint the liaisons without a Board approval.
Put me on the spot there.
It's maybe contrary.
I was going to say.
It may be contrary to the document.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You would, you would need to appoint the liaison of the Commissioners in the same manner in which you make other committee appointments.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would then make a motion that Chairman McLam come back with his recommended nominees for each post as our Chairman, and then we can vote on them.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. I'll come back and give y'all everything you need to know about the next appointees.
You going to call the vote?
All those in favor, somebody raised hand, motion so carries. All right. And I will make sure before the next meeting that I reach out to all my Commissioners, so you'll know what's going on and, and what we're looking at on the assignments of these. Because again, I want y'all to understand, we are taking these resolutions very seriously. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have any conversations or questions about our consent agenda tonight? Are we good? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a motion?
Motion.
Motion to?
That's seconded.
And second, all those in favor, somebody raised hand, motion so carries. Now we're on to the County Manager's Report. I know you've been talking a lot, and get your swallow of water, and go again, sir, that's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the public. It's my pleasure to talk to you a little bit this evening concerning my report. First of all, I would like to talk about the budget for a moment. We are in the Human Resources or the Personnel Review phase of the budget right now. Department budget requests are coming in at that, at this time for all personnel request. We've received quite a few of those, and we're beginning the review of all personnel requests for the upcoming budget this week. So that is ongoing right now between Administration and Human Resources. Also, by the seventeenth of this month, the county departments will, will be required to submit their budget requests to us. So that's not the personnel part, but that's their line items, like fuel and insurance or all the, all those other things that make a county department run. So that, that's where we're at on the budget, there's a lot of work to do yet, but right now, it's at the staff level. We're, we're gathering requests from departments. Finance has a, a big lift ahead of it as well, and so we're, we're going to be working with departments between now and the seventeenth, receive their request in on the seventeenth, and immediately thereafter, beginning the eighteenth, we're going to be starting to go through at a staff level where we're at in terms of our, our departmental budgets. I'd like to commend Health Director Wanda Robinson and her staff for an excellent Health Department accreditation visit. That happened last week. I know a couple of Commissioners, you were there as well, and, and met all the visitors that, that come into a county and go through every little nook and cranny of the Health Department to determine if accreditation will be given. We feel very positive about the results of the visit and are confident that we will soon hear good results. So we don't have the official paperwork yet, but I would like to commend our Health Director Wanda Robinson and her staff for, for their excellent work getting ready for that. To better inform the public about services provided by Sampson, we're going to be starting to, to work on short videos spotlighting different departments. Using our Public Information Office, we're going to be asking department heads and some key employees to highlight what services they provide and give information about the departments. County government is big, and some departments are, are huge, like for instance, the Department of Social Services. And it's hard to know all the different, all the different divisions inside a department, like social services, or, and it's not just social service, but it's, it's all of them, you know? So we're, we're going to be looking at short videos, nothing too terribly long, but some short videos just highlighting some of the services provided and sharing with public what, what a department does, and maybe some information even about how funding takes place. There's a lot of federal money, a lot of state money, and a lot of federal and state requirements that go into some of our departments. So our Public Information Office will be working on that, and we'll probably call them Department Head Spotlight, or Department, Department Spotlights. Today, thank you for your help, Commissioners. We are making an application for five hundred thousand dollars in state grant money to build handicap accessible facilities here at a park in Sampson County. And thanks also to the Sampson County Board of Education and their staff for support of that project. The school system needed to grant the county an easement, that easement was recorded. Thank, thank you County Attorney for your efforts in doing that. And also a special shout out to Recreation Director Dana Hall, who put a huge application together, including public hearings and everything required to, to ask for that money. Now the neat thing about that, there, I've done many grants, and sometimes, a lot of times, there's always a local match. They say, okay, well, we'll give you this money, but what's the local match? Or what, what other money has to be matched? Well, there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the county already got from Behavioral Health, the trillium, and the state will allow that grant to be the match for this grant. So we already got two fifty from another source, we can take that and apply for five hundred using that two fifty, and hopefully we'll be very competitive. So we're not talking about using tax dollars for that. Commissioners, I'd like to take just a moment and talk about a, a couple of the major actions that you did tonight. You've taken action that moves county government in a new direction. You've created mechanisms that will make communication and relationships more thoughtful and intentional. You created an Elected Officials Roundtable and Transportation Committee, and you've established the, the positions of Commissioner Liaisons. For the benefit of the public, that means that over the next couple of months, the county Commissioners' agenda is going to change. So according to the resolution, what, what you see here is going to change a little bit. There will be another item added, and that is, the Commissioners will have the opportunity to give their reports as they've interfaced with other entities such as the Community College, or the school systems, or the business community, or the agricultural community. Next month, staff would be requesting that the Board continue this forward momentum with a focus on agriculture. And we have prepared a, a very good PowerPoint presentation about agriculture in the community. And we'll be coming to you with a specific recommendation next, next month in the April meeting on how you can engage the agricultural community in, in a new way. And we know ag is big in Sampson County. It's, it's your number one industry, a large mass of your land is incorporated in agriculture, and, and so this is a big focus that you can take a look at. Now at the staff level, we're undertaking studies of how we might improve customer service in some of our processes and in some of our offices. We're focusing on continuous improvement. I should be able to make announcements regarding our progress at the Board's meeting in April. And just to kind of highlight that, among the different goals, Commissioners, that, that you had, one of the, one of the key goals is goal number thirty-four, create a culture in which the highest level of customer service is the goal of every employee. And so that is the culture that we're working on improving right now in Sampson County and all of our departments. And so I look forward to giving you some information on, on how we can help with that. I would be remiss if I also did not recognize that Public Works Director Mark Turlington has joined us this evening. Mark, it is good to have you back. Commissioners, I have learned very early on, Mr. Turlington is a person you can depend on, and he reacts really well to being picked on unmercifully. So I thank you for that, Mark. Also to Ashley Holland, you gave great service, and, and Mac Ellen, great service in the absence of Mr. Turlington. I, I know, maybe you don't give that a whole lot, but, but you really stepped up. So thank you both for what you've done in Public Works. Mr. Chairman, thank you for this time, and members of the public, thank you for indulging me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. All right, we're going to move right on to item six, and that is our public comment period. And we'll start out with Kirby, Tiffany Kirby. If you will give name, where are you from?
Hello, how you doing, Commissioner?
Good.
Um, good evening. In two thousand and twenty, I live in Queravon, my name is Tiffany Kirby, I live in Queravon. In two thousand and twenty, I called the Sheriff Department, I called the Commissioner of my county, I called the Health Department to get Lee Max together to clean up my neighborhood. In two thousand and twenty, I know he got arrested three times because he refused to do it. When he finally did clean it, he did a big hole and put the trash in there. So now we at two thousand and twenty-five, and I got pictures, I should have pictures of twenty, but I didn't. In two thousand, two thousand and twenty-five, the trash done built back up, and where the trash is built up, there's two houses on both sides, they got kids, kids is playing all up in that, all in that area. And then where he live at is much trash, and down where I live at, there's an, I live at two eighty-three Queravon, and right beside my house, they, they cleaned out the house, they put all the trash in the yard, so all the trash is blowing up in my yard. So just the twenty-second, twenty-seventh, I came to the, over there, and I was talking to the lady, and I told her that he must got a letter shot because he taking the trash moving from one spot to the next, and he taking trees to cover it up. Okay, so I told the lady, you go down there, that's all you can do is see trees down there in Merrill Lane. But then that night when I get home, guess what he did? He set it on fire, and I called the Fire Department. This really don't make no sense. The first part of the year, we had a bad rainstorm, I took out my money to fix the road. Then he, oh, I got to stop now?
Oh, you're going to get.
So in twenty, so we had a bad rainstorm and the road washed out, I took my money to get it fixed. So then it washed out again, so we had some people in the neighborhood to fix it. He called the law and said we were stealing dirt. That's God's dirt. We trying to have a right of way to get from one end to the next, because it's so bad down there. You want to see the pictures? I got the Commissioner, Reverend Thaddeus, he know because I done called, and this time around, I called Raleigh. Raleigh told me it's a private road, ain't nothing they can do. So I started back over again from two thousand and twenty. I don't, man, I'm just telling you, the man is on drugs, that's the main problem. I mean, if I can take my whole spot where I live at and put it somewhere in that same area, I would do it, but I can't do it because I ain't got the money. But something need to be done about it. I know you cannot condemn because they are people that. I know you cannot condemn because they are people that stay out there, but he need to be accountable for, for that stuff because he just leaving it. Oh, God, you doing something? I'm done.
Okay.
Will y'all like to see the pictures?
Yes, we take them, please, Stephanie, if you will.
I put the date on each picture.
Okay.
These are recent pictures.
All right, thank you. She hold them for us and, and we'll go back. Thank you.
And it's in Queret. Her name is Lee Max together. And we can't sign a petition.
Apostle Mons? You up, bro?
Yes, sir. Good evening. How's, how's everybody doing? First of all, I know y'all used to be getting up here saying, being harsh on you, but let me commend, let me commend my commissioner and the board as a whole. Thank you for getting the ranch road straight. I would have submitted a, a bill for, for busted tires and out alignment and all that kind of stuff over the 17 years. So I did help save some money from the county by not doing that. But, um, but they did pave it, they sorted Friday and finished Saturday, and I think they was doing the lines on it. So it's a nice smooth ride. Now, it's like I go down and do some burnouts on it, you know? But thank you, but thank you for that. So, um, so this is what I like to address this evening. I've heard what you said, Mr. Hudson. I'm, I'm still, I'm going to make an appointment to see you. I've spoken with Mr. Crumpler on last week, so I, I'm making my business to make my rounds to, to, to the commissioners, because not only just in my district one, I speak to all of them. And so with that being said, I understand what you were saying earlier about going in with the department heads and so on and so forth, but I really need to sit down and speak with you. Because as I shared with my commissioner a couple of months ago, my commissioner and I speak every month after the meetings and sometimes before the meetings and so on and so forth. So he sees my face maybe a couple of times a month, but, and we do bump heads, but, but in it all and through it all, we still love one another, 'cause we walk in love. But, um, but this is vital. There's still, and I share this with my commissioner and by him, agriculture guy in this Sampson County, agriculture is, is important. There's still some bad seeds that needs to be eradicated out of this county, and some of them are department heads. And so I understand you all are new, like I shared with Commissioner Crumpler on last week, when I get up here, don't take it personal. I'm passionate about what I believe in, and I'm a very direct person. And so there, there's still some cancer. Anyone who has had cancer knows that you don't want to just get some of it, you want to get it all out. And so with that being said, there's still some cancer in Sampson County government that needs to be eradicated. And it's important going forward. So that's why I would love to sit down and speak with you, because there are several individuals in county government and department heads that needs to be dealt with. And I know that's not popular, but you're building trust back with your constituents. You're building trust back with the county, and this is, this is vitally important that in order to build trust, there's levels to trust. Just because I trust you with a dollar doesn't mean I'm going to trust you with my bank account number. So you understand what I'm saying, there's levels to trust. So this is level one that we're dealing with now. So going forward, we need to speak on this. So I thank you all. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Jay? You're all right. Well, when you get there before we click the light on you, okay?
To the Chair President and to all the other commissioners, I understand. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the job that you do.
Can you give us your address, please, sir? I'm sorry.
2254 Old Mint's Highway.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clear up one thing. And some of you see that I don't stand for the flag, but there's a reason, health reason. Not because I disrespect the flag. I want to make that shit clear. I'm not going to say anything on the water tonight, but in our community, I take pride in the High Smithside community. We have a lot of issues that are going on that we need to talk about. One is the speed limit. We have a young lady back there a couple of years ago, at four o'clock in the morning, there was a tractor trailer sitting in her front yard. Thank God, no one would hurt. Even if we can't change the speed limit, maybe we can lower the speed limit. I put some kind of signs up saying farm equipment, because we have a lot of farm equipment in that area. And you know, farm equipment on the run so fast, but then you get a lot of these people out here thinking they did the racetrack, and they drive like a you-know-what. The many times I pull out of my driveway and I look to my right, I see a car three miles down, and before I can get a half a mile, he's right up on my butt. Something needs to be done about that. And the other thing is, I know who my commissioner is. I say this, communication is very important, very important. When I was working in Pennsylvania, I worked for one of the largest communication companies in the world, Verizon, AT&amp;T. And I am very big on communicating. We have to do that. We are strong in numbers. I can say something, but it won't mean nothing if I'm getting invited to listen to me. There's power in numbers. And so I'm just asking you to consider some of these things, our commissioner, I would like to see, and really, every community needs a president, because she, because the commissioner can't communicate with everybody. But see, it's like a chain of command. And so we meet once a month from different churches, even in my backyard. And I like to let my people know what's going on. If you know, I said that about the water, because the last couple of, we, some, some good, we had some good news about the water. All right, I'm done.
All right, James? Full name and address, please, dear, so I can get all this wrote down. Thank you.
I'm Antoinette James. I reside at 2314 Old Mint's Highway in Roseboro. I am going to talk about the water tonight. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Ivanhoe. I'm happy for them. Roseboro wants to be just like them. Mainly, I'm up here because I don't want anybody to forget Roseboro and that we also have a problem with high levels of, high levels of PFAS in our water. I am one of the, one of several people who has a water filtration system. My mom next door, she has one, several of my neighbors have them. We were told at the time that they would, they were installed, that they would last approximately two years. Not true. They last approximately nine months. My clean water went out at the same time that my mom's did, and when the filter needs to be changed, the water stops. Nothing comes out of that faucet. So you're only left with the faucet that has the PFAS running out of it. I called the representative at DEQ, and I was told that it's approximately $200 to come out and change these. I think it's three filters or however many it is that needs to be changed. I think it's unfair. I think it's unreasonable, unreasonable, because this is not something that we did to ourselves. I was told that they're running out of money, they're not going to be able to supply bottles of water anymore, and they won't be able to pay for the filtration, the filters, when they need to be changed. So I'm just reiterating what I said at a, a previous meeting. I just don't want anybody to forget that Roseboro is on the map. We need the water too. Everybody deserves clean drinking water, not just clean drinking water, but I want a washing clean water as well. I don't think it's very healthy to take showers or baths in PFAS water, even though people say it's okay. I don't think it is, and that's me being a nurse. I'm speaking from a, a healthcare point of view. Again, congratulations to Ivanhoe, and I hope that somebody will do, be able to help us soon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought that to our attention about that day. And see what we can do on that end as far as not making any promises, but I didn't realize they wasn't following up on some things, so thank you. Rouse?
What name is that?
Rouse, R-O-U-S-E, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, you're good, come on.
Andrea Rouse, 229 Keith Road, Roseboro, North Carolina, live in the Snow Hill community. I'm not going to talk about the dump too much today. But I did want to say this based on what our county commissioner said, relations and connections, one of the goals that you guys. Number one, create, creating an environment where residents feel respected and engaged in county government decisions. I don't know about nobody else in here, but today I have felt like I have never felt at one of these meetings. I felt like I was a part of Sampson County. I watched you guys engage with the audience here and the people that were talking, never seen that before. The only time I ever got engagement was after the meeting. Normally, when we stood up here, we looked at frowning faces the whole time, the majority of the time. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So I'm not going to talk about the dump, but I'm going to talk about Lake Worth School Row. A lot of people do come to me and ask me questions, how can they get help? Lake Worth School Row, when we had a grant, we had gotten some grant money, if I'm not mistaken. And one of the things that were talked about during that time, even by County Commissioner Kelsey, that they were looking at running some water on Lake Worth School Road, Marion Amish Road, and White Woods Road, some water. So what's happening now on Lake Worth School Road, if anybody lives here now? I don't know what's happened to their water table, but they did have high testing of PFAS in their water as well. But their wells are messing up. They keep going deeper and they, they're completely, there's no water in a lot of spots. They're constantly having problems and telling they got to go deeper. When they go deeper, they're still not going, getting water. I don't know if some farm or something has come over there that's using up a lot of water that could be taking water from their water table, but that's Lake Worth School Row. Then like the lady was saying on Mint's Highway, the nurse, I can't remember your name, baby, but what she was saying is that we found out, I found out from Lake Worth School Row that that was true from DEQ. They were even not coming out testing anymore. They had run out, they say, we're done, we're not sending out any more filtration systems. And when they were going out early, and, but that is something you guys want to look into. So the whole PFAS situation in the landfill, it was all great. It happened, it was wonderful. It stopped us from talking for a while, but guess what? It's over. It's over. Thank you so much. I appreciate what you guys are doing, and we're looking forward to new things. Thank you guys for the transparency that you've shown lately, 'cause we've never seen that before. Thank you.
Y'all gotta thank you. You ain't got that. Sutton?
My name is Larry Sutton. I reside at 4761 Bear Skin Road, Clinton. And I also would like to express my pleasure with the tone and tenor of tonight's meeting. That went, I think, quite well. And I am speaking to you as a concerned citizen of Sampson County. I'm also speaking to you as the president of the Sampson County NAACP. And my main focus tonight is on the approaching budget issues. And my question that I asked myself is, what should the county budget reflect? And let me begin with a little history. This county was formed in 1784, and for 81 years, this county embraced slavery. Okay? And then in 1865, slavery was ended. And for the next 100 years, we, as a county, embraced Jim Crow. And Jim Crow pretty much ended around 1965. And for the last 60 years, you can say we've had a pretty long stretch, or a pretty short stretch of freedom in this county, if you are a black American. And that's the history. And tonight, with the budget looming, what does it reflect? To me, it should reflect policies and practices to increase revenue. Also, a commitment to level the playing field. A third idea, a commitment to reduce the growing wealth gap among certain subgroups. And another ideal is moving along a path to greater economic opportunity. Next, the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And lastly, more job training for the underserved and the underemployed. I hope this year's budget will move us towards those ideas and will continue going forward. And it sounds like you guys are off to a pretty good start in 2025, even though you are still having to balance the budget, but I hope not on the backs of children and the elderly. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. All right, Peterson?
Okay, it looks like y'all have inherited a problem what I read on the internet last week from Crumpler.
Name and address.
With all the big bills, everywhere who it is.
Mr. Peterson, what's your address?
Sir, 28385. And so it looked to me like the problem has started a long time ago. Used to, you could sell eggs, you could sell pork meat, all that. You can't do unless it's government inspected. And now you can't build nothing unless it goes through the planning committee, and that's a lot of money, 25 cent a foot. Farm machinery have worked on in fields, $160 an hour. And it looks like y'all inherited a problem like somebody buying a house or a farm, and they didn't do a title search, and to come to find out, they owed several thousand dollars, and they got to pay it or lose it. And the claim in something I saw back here, there's about $4 million that hadn't been paid in back taxes. It was a bad crop year, and a lot of people's lost a lot of money, and they probably ain't able to pay. And so the, the county commissioners voted enormously to advertise it, and it'll probably be sold. And I come over here years ago about a problem, and only one that solved it, county commissioners claimed they couldn't do nothing. And Jimmy Norton took care of it himself. And he ought to be the highest paid person in the county or either the second, but he's not. And he should be able to get the equipment that he needs to protect his deputies and the people, because he's on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And this year, a guy that was over here where didn't fix the budget where supposed to be noddied in, he probably draw the paycheck. If I don't do my job, I don't get paid.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Fason?
Good evening, Glenn Fason, 7161 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey. First of all, I want to thank y'all. Mr. Hudson, the committee, I would just ask this briefly, when you do your appointments for your committees, whoever do that, please make it diverse, make it represent Sampson County. And, and, and it's okay to get people on the committee that may not agree with you. Opinions, different opinions always fine to disagree, and it's not get everybody to be a yes man or a yes woman. Now with that said, I move on. So I spoke recently- So, I spoke recently. My sister been coming here for over two years about the water. Elaine Hunt, that's my sister. So, y'all know about the water situation. And I think people discontent is, you know, we know in government wheels move slowly, but I think the discontent is we not seeing the wheels move at all a lot of times. Thank God for Ivanhoe situation, but I don't think, me personally, I don't know what God has in store. I'm going to have 20 years to wait for a grant to come through, fruition. So, I went to, I've been thinking about stuff. I talked to Mr. Sutton, and I spoke to one of the gentleman who was on my Mount Rushmore, me and Dr. Larry Bell, and we had a conversation. And we talked about general obligation bond referendums. And I've never heard that come up since I've been coming to these meetings, but I know it exists in the state of North Carolina. So, my thoughts are, with all these committees we're trying to create, why don't we create a committee to do research to let the people speak for bond referendum? They vote. Those of you don't know what it is, look it up. I got three minutes, so I can't explain it tonight. But bond referendum lets the people speak, and it makes them obligated. I know the pushback is that's debt, but it's a low interest debt. And I don't know anyone in here that don't have some kind of debt that reoccurs every month. It was light bill, water, well, we don't have water bill. Let's should bill some kind of bill. But a bond referendum, ladies and gentlemen, would be something I've done my research on. Dr. Bell was superintendent of schools, county commissioner, almost 20 years as a House of Representative. If anybody know the ins and outs of that stuff and that I trust, and this county have trusted, is him. And we had a long conversation about that. And I never heard it mentioned, but that's something that I wish you would give your utmost attention to because the wheels are moving slow. County can't fund it. Grants come very slow. And clean water and clean air, we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faison. Commissioners, have you got anything else to come forward more than that?
No, I'd just like to thank everybody who showed up tonight and showed interest in the government. We appreciate your input and look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.